And our first business item is an approval of a list of streets for the 2026 citywide pavement rehabilitation project to receive Measure F and Fiscal 2526 SB 1 road maintenance and rehabilitation account funding. And it looks like we have three presenters from Public Works, and we'll start with the Director, Ms. Bottom.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. I would like to introduce Neil Leary, our Deputy Director and City Engineer, and Derek Linsley, our Senior Civil, who will be presenting this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. As Danielle said, Neil Leary, City Engineer, Deputy Public Works Director. I'm here with Derek Linsley, our Senior Civil Engineer with the Public Works Department, to present an item here, a presentation to you entitled the 2026 Citywide Pavement Rehabilitation Project Streets List. And there we go. There's the first slide. Next slide, please. So we'll start with a slide that provides an overview of the presentation tonight. First, we'll provide some details and some facts about our road network. And then we'll move into a discussion of the Fiscal 2627 funding projections for the road rehab program. And there's four pieces to it. Measure F, the recently passed voter initiative, Streets Initiative. The next item of the funding is Senate Bill 1, and that's from a 2017 state legislature action. It's a gas tax. HUDA, which is the... That's the... Oh, there we go. Thank you, Derek. It's the Highway Users Tax Account Fund, and that is also a fuel tax. And then finally, the franchise fees, which comes from the vehicle impact fees that we receive from our Republic Services, our trash provider. And then finally, we're going to provide some of our proposed road and road maintenance and rehabilitation plan. We'll present the division of the city into zones, and we'll present that zone plan to you tonight. We'll also present to you the streets list for Fiscal 2627. And we'll also present to you a five-year plan of streets that we propose to include in the first five years of our road maintenance plan, which is funded by primarily Measure F. Next slide, please. So first, we'll start with some facts on the road network. There's 198 lane miles that comprise the city's road network, or 98 centerline miles, being that most of our roads are two-lane. The area of pavement that's provided by those roadways is .6 square miles, approximately 390 acres. And that's quite a large area. That's about the area. 390 acres would be the east side of town, from I-780 down to the water, from First Street to Seventh Street. So imagine that whole area paved. That's the expanse of the pavement surface that the city is to rehab with this program. Another key fact here is the deferred maintenance number, and right now, that number is $60 million. And that was calculated in 2024, and that is the cost to bring all of the roads that are in poor or failed condition or fair condition up to acceptable condition. So that's a key figure in this program. Other facts associated with our road network, we have 388 named streets, which we have further segregated into 584 roadway segments for the purpose of our analysis in the road pavement management system. And then another term we've used in our discussions on the road rehab program is PCI, which is Pavement Condition Index. And that's a scale that goes zero to 100. That is a rating of how good a condition the road is in. We are currently at 52 out of 100 for our road network. Each road is rated between 0 and 100. Our aggregate total for the whole road network is 52, and we've been hovering around 50 to 55 since 2016. And that's... It peaked in 1999 when we were at 71. So it's been in a steady decline for the last two decades. The other key part of I wanted to present to you tonight is the functional classifications of our roadways. And there's basically three different classifications for our roadways. Residential, local, which comprise the largest number of bucket of streets out there, and that's the roadways that access individual houses. And the lowest level of the street, and there's 60, approximately 60% of the roads are residential and local. Approximately 20% are arterials, and approximately 20% are collectors. Examples of collectors would be East Fifth and West K and Hastings. Examples of arterials would be Military, East Second, and Southampton and Rose Drive. That's important as we put together our plan for how we're going to approach the road rehab program. It's important to understand the classification of roads, which goes into how we put the program together. Next slide, please. So this next slide is a graphic presentation of the PCI condition of the city's road network. This is a graph showing all the city's roadways represented, and it's a color-coded chart. Good is represented by the green. Red and orange are poor and failed. We're in a position of the haves and the have-nots. The greens comprise about 43% of the city's road network by area, and the poor and failed are at 47%. So 90% of the roads are either in good condition or poor or failed, and it's almost a split equally between the two. This graph is also, or this graphic is also available on the city's website on the roads page, and it's updated. Next slide, please. So we have good news tonight to relay. There's $5 to $5.5 million per year available to treat our roads. Much needed, and that's the good news here. The majority of that money is coming out of the Measure F that was passed in November of '24, and we're projecting that at $4 million a year. The other, as we alluded to earlier, Senate Bill 1 is coming in at around $700,000 a year, and that's what we're projecting when we put our plan together, about $700,000 coming through the gas tax that we receive back from the state. And then the HUDA, the Highway Users Tax Account, we're projecting $100,000 coming from that. That's also a fuel tax back from the state to the local agency. And finally, franchise fees coming through the Republic Services contract that we have with them. As the city's trash provider, they provide $200,000 to address the vehicle impacts that they have. And this is up from $1 to $1.5 million, which is basically the funds minus Measure F. So as a result of Measure F, we're able to address the road rehab program in a very robust way. Next slide, please. So Measure F, which was passed in November of 2024, it was a citizens' initiative that began to save our streets. It was a special sales tax specifically for streets, half-cent sales tax on retail purchases. As I said, it's projected to generate $4 million annually, and it's earmarked exclusively for repairing streets, potholes, and sidewalks exclusively. The tax went into effect in April, on April 1st, so there's been a month of collection already. And there are two citizen oversight committees. One is a local tax oversight board, and the other is an independent committee run solely by Benicia residents. And there'll be annual audits. So most importantly here, the boost of funding that comes from Measure F will allow the city, for the first time, to develop a long-term, comprehensive plan to fix our roads and to reverse a decade-long decline in our roadway condition. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Derek Linsley to speak to the zones approach that we're presenting tonight and our road rehab plan.
Thank you, Neil. So the additional funding from Measure F allows us to be a little more strategic in our approach to roadway maintenance. When in previous years, it felt like we were kind of hopping around the city, plugging holes in a sinking ship. We're able to go on the offense now and really try and get us out of this hole. And how we're going to do that is we're proposing to break the city's residential and local roads into bite-sized chunks, 24 geographic pavement zones, to be exact. And that's just the residential and local streets. Our plan is to treat, in their entirety, two to four, or maybe even more, zones per year. No zones will be repeated until all 24 zones have been treated. So we're not going to go back and repeat any until we get every zone out of the 24 done. But at the same time, we don't want to forget about our major roads. We dedicate about $1 million, maybe $1.5 million per year to the major streets, the arterials and collectors that Neil described. Those are 40% of our road network by area. And in the next slide, you'll see what the zones actually look like if you're... I don't know what I'm talking about right now, but the zones are developed using arterials and collectors as a first cut, which actually naturally divide the city up nicely and evenly as far as pavement area. And I'll show you what I'm talking about in this next slide here. So this is the proposed pavement zone map. The black lines are the boundaries of the zones, and the numbers within the rectangles are the zone numbers. So starting at Zone 1 is down in the southeast corner of town, down on the east side by the port, and then going from right to left, all the way to Zone 24, which is the industrial area. Each zone includes about 300 to 500 square feet of pavement. So we tried to get them as close as possible as far as area, but sometimes it just didn't work out. So 300 to 500, 1,000 square feet. The cost to treat these zones right now really depends on the pavement condition. And nothing really highlights that more than Zone 22 is an example. It's at the top of Panorama where it crosses Rose, that whole neighborhood up there. It's $500,000 to treat all the roads in that zone. It's good roads, mostly surface seals if we were to pick that zone. On the other hand, Zone 14, which is roughly the same size area, square footage, that zone is by Whitechapel Drive or the Carlisle area. That zone has a $3.5 million treatment cost despite being nearly the same size. So that, a lot of bad roads in that zone, requires more extensive treatment. And the zones are only for residential streets, so this map can be a little confusing, especially Zone 23. It's just how our mapping program drew this, and I'll probably redraw the boundaries again in the future. But Zone 23, that boundary goes all the way across Lake Herman Road. It is only residential streets. Lake Herman Road is an arterial. Reservoir Road is an arterial. Those ones aren't included in that Zone 23. So just keep that in mind when you're looking at this version of this map. During the Zones approach has many, many advantages over what we were previously doing, which me and Neil refer to as the hopscotch approach, where short street segments are being treated seemingly all over the city. This Zones approach, firstly, and probably most importantly, maximizes construction efficiency. Every time a contractor has to stop production and move a couple blocks or move across town, that's time wasted, and that's money wasted. And we talked to contractors about this, and it could be a 40% decline in efficiency and 40% increase in costs, basically. When you look at that photo there, imagine all of that stopping, picking up all of that equipment, all of that traffic control, moving. You know, that's about a half a day of work before you could get going again. So it maximizes construction efficiency. At the same time, it minimizes construction disruption. A hopscotch approach with $5.5 million-sized pavement project would turn the city into one large construction site, impacting every neighborhood every summer, roadwork seemingly happening everywhere. Turn down a block, and you may be confronted with a street being paved, which I think maybe for the first couple of years, like, you know, people might find that novel. But I think that it would get a little irritating after a while, every summer of that. So the Zones approach confines construction to the zone, and it's one summer, and then it's done for seven, eight, maybe 10 years until we're coming back to that zone and surface sealing. So it's ripping the bandaid off, gets it all over with at once. Another advantage is uniform condition and appearance of our streets. If you go downtown and stand in one of the intersections, when the cars are coming through, obviously, and look down each road, you may see four different conditions from good all the way down to poor. If you're driving around town, you may go one block on a smooth street, next block a failed street, the next block somewhere in between. The Zones approach gives us large swaths of the city a uniform appearance, and it's very aesthetically pleasing compared to the hopscotch approach. There are also design efficiencies similar to construction. Keeping the project contained in a specific area reduces engineering costs and reduces project complexities. And it's just easier to communicate these zones. If you've ever flipped through the PTAP report that we publish every few years and tried to find your street in a 100-page book of tables of street names and segments, you know how difficult that could be when these projects start to get really large. Zones, there's 24 zones. It's not 600 roadway segments. And so it's easy to communicate. It's easy to understand. It's transparent, and it's easy to track also. So this would be much preferable to look back in the past and see what progress has been made. So in summary, taking nearly 600 roadway segments and reducing it to these 24 zones just reduces complexity and improves efficiency at all levels. So we really feel like it's the right approach. And before I want to get into the proposed streets list for 2026 and the tentative five-year plan, I want to discuss what the zone selection process actually looks like. It's a very iterative process. There was a lot of back and forth with Neil and I putting sticky notes and marking up our zone map, and then stepping back and looking at it and making adjustments. It's iterative. There's many factors that we considered when developing this plan for the next year and into the five-year plan, including to start the available funds. That might be what we know most about, that and pavement condition. From there, we have the cost to treat a zone, and Streetsaver, which is our roads database, did a really good job at spitting out the numbers of the cost estimates to treat a zone. We also looked at proximity to other selected zones when we started picking some, because we want to avoid adjacent zones. We want to spread the wealth, per se, and actually hit various areas of the city while keeping within the zones. We liked the potential conflicts or integration with planned public works projects such as utility replacements. And we actually did utility inspections for this, next year's proposed project. Anything beyond that, if we were to inspect for the next five-year plan, those inspections have an expiration date, and so we just did them for the next, the 2026 plan here. What else did we look at? We looked at minimizing lifecycle costs and just how to maximize the project benefit. So for 2026, 2027 projects, this would be constructed, not this summer, but next summer, 2026. I'll just give you a little idea of how we came to this project here. So we started at a road on the west side, Cambridge Drive from Rose to Capitol. It is about a half-mile stretch of roadway, and it's one of the worst roads in the city. It has a PCI of 5, and sometimes Streetsaver actually wanted to put that down to 0, but I kicked it up to 5 because you could still drive down it. We're spending a lot of time and money patching paving and filling potholes on that street. Our crews are out there about, on average, once every three months, and that adds up, and that gets expensive. So we felt like that was a natural starting point. Also, Cambridge, that segment has been part of a pavement plan in the past, and it was removed. And so it's a good starting place. From there, that led us to Zone 17, which is right at the top of that segment of Cambridge. This zone has a PCI of 16, which has failed. It has a treatment cost of $2.9 million for that zone. And Zone 17 includes streets like Cooper Drive and Capitol Drive, and a lot of those cul-de-sacs that come off of those, the courts that come off of those streets. Those two projects right there is about $3.6 million. So we're already down to only having about $1.7, $1.6 left. We chose Zone 6, which also has a very low PCI of 28. And Zone 6 is just to the east of Mary Farmer Elementary School. It includes Carolina Drive and Drolette and those streets over there, to the east of West 7th Street. And the treatment cost for that zone is $1.6 million. So that's our proposed project for next summer. Looking further ahead, five-year plan, so we went over Year 1, which is 2026. And this slide is actually animated, so you can see that those two zones highlighted in red there. Moving forward to 2027, we are proposing Zone 2, which is the east side of downtown, south of Military, but west of East Fifth Street. And Zone 13, which is the neighborhood around Tenney's, Seaview, and Warwick. 2028, we proposed Zone 3, which is the east side of First Street. And then we would include First Street in 2028, Year 3 of this plan also, from the base all the way up to Military. And Zone 20, which is the neighborhood near the top of Solano and Hastings Drives. And while we're there, we'd also treat Solano Drive from Hastings to Larkin, Hastings from Zinnia to Rose. Year 4, in 2029, we'd propose Zone 1, which is the one at the southeast corner of the city. Zone 7, which is just to the east of West 7th Street, and we would repair West 7th Street from Military to 780 in 2029. And then with leftover funds... Oh, sorry. Thank you, Neil. I spent all this time animating this slide. Yeah, with the leftover funds, which isn't much at that point, we would go and surface seal Zone 23 and McAllister and Kearney, all surface seals up there, so it's a very inexpensive zone to get to. In Year 5, 2030 now, we propose Zone 4. Zone 4 is south of Military from West Fifth to West Ninth. Zone 14, which is Ardmore Way, Whitechapel Drive, Carlisle, that area. And Zone 16, which is York Drive, Brentwood, and Mills, the streets around those, including those streets. And I just want to emphasize that this plan is not included in the resolution for this business item as written. We're presenting this plan to show the council and the residents how we imagine the next five years unfolding. It's going to serve as a starting point, and once you start getting three, five years in the future, there's a lot of uncertainties as far as funding, as far as utilities, and just pavement decay, the rate it decays. And so we're really just laying this out for comment and discussion and to keep things transparent, but it's not something we're being locked into here. But this is what we're going to serve as a starting point and go from there, so it's worth discussing. This five-year plan includes treatment of 12 of the 24 residential zones, so half of them. We're really going out hard in residential. 6.3 million square feet of pavement, which is 37% of the city's pavement. And we'd still spend about $4.1 million on arterials and collectors, and these would be the streets that are near and around the zones being treated. But it's definitely a residential-heavy plan to start here. So I know there's a lot of information in this presentation in a pretty short amount of time. So any of the more esoteric concepts, road repairs, how pavement degrades, PCI, if those were hard to follow, on the city's roads webpage and the city's website, there's a lot of good information. There's a YouTube link to a webinar that Neil and I held in December where we go into a deeper dive into those concepts. We also gave a presentation to City Council back in July 16, 2024, and that really dove into the city's pavement woes and strategies for improvement. And highly recommend checking those presentations out for some more information that we just probably don't have time to cover or to recover here tonight. So that's it for our presentation.
Thank you, Derek. I think we do have some questions, and then we'll open it up to the public for some additional questions. I'll start with Councilwoman Birdseye.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Derek. Neil, thanks for all the work that's been put into this. This is a subject that is near and dear to our community's hearts. So your work on this is appreciated, and the yes on Measure F is very much appreciated, too. And we have a couple of folks in the audience tonight that were on that Citizens Committee that worked on it. We thank the citizens that made it happen. I have a couple of questions. Overall, I understand it. I get it. I geeked out on the maps last night, just digging in, figuring out which zones were not included in the first five years. I know they'll be in the second five years, but I have a couple of questions on why... Like, there's red, like messy red zones that aren't in the first five years, like Zone 5 and Arsenal, Zone 10, Hillcrest, Zone 11, Vista Grande, Zone 12. Those are all orange-red, and yet we've got Waters End that's all green in the first five as just a seal. So I think that we should, you know, I know it costs more to do the bloody red zones, but these are, you know, these are streets that are messing up cars. So if you can tell me why we're going out to Waters End, which is the newest part of our community, before, say, fixing roads that are, you know, really messed up in the Arsenal, Hillcrest, and Vista Grande areas?
Yes, thank you. That's an excellent question and definitely one worth discussing tonight. So ultimately, we have $60 million in deferred maintenance, and that was calculated last year. It might be a little more at this point. And while Measure F provides a great boost to our funding, it's still only $4 million per year. So this is a long haul to get back to a network PCI above 70, a long haul to get all of our streets. And so the unfortunate part about that is that someone's got to be last in 12 to 15 years. It's just, there has to be, you know, someone that goes, that's last, and there's going to be plenty of streets and plenty of neighborhoods that get left out, and it's just the unfortunate part of the hole that we're in. Specifically to Zone 23. Excellent question also on that, and I would understand wholeheartedly why anyone would look at Zone 23 and be like, "Why are we going to that? It's totally green." So an answer on that is Zone 23 has PCI of 74, and this is... on that is Zone 23 has a PCI of 74. And this is an excellent zone to demonstrate lifecycle cost of a roadway and how getting to this one in three, four years is the right way to go when we're trying to reduce lifecycle cost. So we consider a lot of things when developing this plan. One proven strategy to stretch a dollar further is to keep the good roads good. It's the mantra of road repair. And we don't have many good roads. So this isn't really a problem for most areas of town. But we have three zones, Zone 23, Zone 22, and I believe Zone, I want to say, Zone 9, which are our good zones. And Zone 23 has a PCI of 74. In three years, that's going to be a PCI of 68 with the way that roads degrade. That is the point, when things go from surface seal, cheap, to more extensive mill and overlay digouts replacing pavement. So although there are worse streets out there, in 2029, Zone 23 will have a cost of $500,000 to repair. If we wait three more years on that zone, it's up to a million. Five years after that, we're up to $2 million to repair those streets. And if we go Zone 23 last, it would be $2.5 million to treat that entire zone. So to get to the same exact place, Zone 23 with good roads, we would be spending $2 million more if we don't get to it in 2029. And that's why Zone 23 is included. That's why other good zones, such as 22 and 9, would probably be in the next five years because we want to get to them before things start getting really expensive. And I drive up in Waters End, my kids love to go to the park up there. I look at the roadways and there's, it's, 2029 is probably stretching it. We would want to get there earlier if we could. But we definitely want to get it before it really starts to fall apart.
Great answer. It's like you knew I was going to ask that. Okay.
We suspected that one would come up.
I, he didn't, I didn't tell him I was going to ask that question. Okay. I appreciate the strategy there. Second question. There's chatter on social media that this road project should start this summer. Can we tell our community why it can't start this summer?
Another good question. I'll try to approach that question. So SB1 is a fund source that we use, the gas tax. And we come to the council every year, about this time of year, to present the streets list for this year. Last year, we were here and we presented Military West from basically Safeway to Drolette was the program, the streets that we selected following along. This is prior to the passage of Measure F. So we didn't know we'd have this kind of amount of funds to approach our road network with. And so that was the street that we selected. And we knew that, you know, there was a chance that Measure F would pass. But we wanted to bring a thoughtful approach to council, which we're doing tonight, to lay out our plan, the zones approach, rather than try to bring it a year or two soon. So we're bringing it to you tonight. This year, as we said, the 2026, 2025, excuse me, project is, we're sticking to the old approach of doing our arterials, which was all we had the funds to do. And so that's the reason why the first larger project is coming in 2026 is because of the funding that's needed, the level of funding. And with the money that we have currently, we're addressing the arterials. But that changes with this passage of Measure F. And we have, for the first time ever, a consistent, large amount of money to put towards road rehab. And just to piggyback off what Derek's excellent answer, we were only able to do the surface seals in previous years because of the level of funding. For the first time in a long time, we're going to get after the streets that require the reconstrucks that are $100 per square yard unit price. We're able to get to those streets now that we have this larger amount of funding versus the $8 per square yard, which is the surface seal type streets that we were able to do, only do in previous years with previous budgets. So I hope that answered the question.
It did. Thank you, Neil. That's very thoughtful. My last question. Zone 24, Industrial Park. What's the plan for that? I drive through the Industrial Park and my Subaru feels
Yes. As Derek said, we have a $60 million deferred maintenance amount right now. And that's, and that impacts moving forward. We're also committed to doing our residential streets, which is something we messaged out during the lead-up to Measure F election, that we are going to address all of the residential streets in the first 12 to 15 years of this program and get them all addressed. There's going to be some areas that are going to be behind. And that's our approach today. We've brought to you a five-year plan. One year of that is what is required by SB1. You have to message out the one year. And we're showing you the next four. They still need to be vetted to make sure that the necessary utility work, that we want to make sure that we're doing in advance of these reconstrucks so we're not tearing up these streets a year or two after we rebuild them to replace a utility. We still have to do that vetting. And so that's why we're calling the years two through five as draft at this point. But we wanted to give a sense to council for how we were approaching this, this zones approach, which we think makes a lot of sense for all the reasons that we laid out in the presentation tonight. The Industrial Park is going to be behind. It's not going to be in the first five years per the plan that we're proposing. But again, that can change as this moves forward and new information comes to the table.
I thank you both.
Councilmember, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mine are simple ones.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have a couple of quick ones. First off, I think the zone approach is an incredible way to save manpower, be more efficient with the labor, and it is a strong way to go. Given that, however, can you explain to me what the SB1 dollars and the HUTA dollars, they're not going to be included in the residential rehab dollars, correct? Those are going to be saved and put aside for arterials?
No. Those will be lumped together. That's part of the $5 to $5.5 million that we have available each year that we're projecting out 15-plus years for this program. And we're not segregating certain roads to certain parts of those four funds that we identified. The lion's share of the money is coming out of Measure F, which we're estimating at $4 million a year. SB1 and HUTA are going to collectively provide about $800,000 per the plan. And they will be available for any of the streets, local arterial collector.
So what funds would be used in the event that there is serious damage to a street? Is that, that wouldn't be used as SB1 funds?
All the funds are available.
All the funds are going to come out of that singular, that combined account. All right. Because what I'm getting to is as the amount of fuel that's being consumed is going down, and the sales tax is SB1, that number is going to most likely go down unless the governor and the state decide that they are going to tax vehicle miles traveled. So is there built into the plan a reduction of SB1 funds? Potential reduction of SB1 funds?
Yeah, that's a very good question. There isn't uncertainty in the program. We wanted to put a safe number in there for the gas tax. We think $800,000 is a safe number. It could very well go north of that. And we don't think it'll go south of that. There's a lot of uncertainty in the near term with electrical vehicles. But state legislature has indicated a preference or a desire to make sure they keep pace with the current levels of funding. This is a California nationwide problem addressing our streets. They're going to come up with a solution, as you say, if it goes from gas sales to vehicle miles as a way to capture that same level of funding. We don't know for sure that. We have to have a plan that we think is solid, and we think it is what we've estimated. It's a lesser piece of our puzzle. $4 million of the $5.5 is from Measure F, which is sales tax. Obviously, there's uncertainties of that as well. You know, sales tax can go up and down. But we think we have a plan that makes sense. And if the funds do come in less than projected, yes, that'll impact how the number of streets that we take out. And luckily, this program can be sized up and sized down accordingly, and we're not going to spend beyond our means in any way.
Thank you, Neil.
Councilmember, Largusfata.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Bottom, Mr. Leary, Mr. Lindsay. Thank you for this great presentation. This is a great example of good government at work. And Mr. Lindsay, to your point, I think people getting tired of road work around town ironically might be a good thing in a couple of years. So we'll keep our fingers crossed and hope the community will remain patient as this work continues. I also want to thank you for putting Cambridge near the top of this list because my inbox is going to drop considerably. I'm sure people will find other reasons to write, but that has always been a list, or a street that's been at the top of many folks' lists. I had submitted a number of questions. Thankfully, I appreciate staff's time in addressing those really detailed stuff. There's a handful of, I guess, more strategic questions I wanted to ask this evening. The first is around, I'll call it flexibility. We have kind of a five-year plan. It's exactly where this thing should start. But I've just, it's a two-part question. And that is, just for the benefit of the council, how much flexibility will there be in this plan? Is this something that we can revisit maybe once a year? And the second part of that question is, how did you incorporate the below-ground utilities into the overall plans? There's a number of connectors in here. Don't want to dive into street by street by street. There's a number of connectors that connect neighborhoods that kind of push down the list. So that's why I'm kind of tying flexibility as well as kind of a clear understanding of how the underground work factored into the zoning and the priorities.
Good question, councilmember. I'll attack the utility question first. We looked at all the utilities within the first-year project, the 2026 citywide pavement, the streets list we presented tonight. We've vetted all those streets, looked at all the utilities, and we have cleared those streets for not being in need of any major sewer or water replacement. We're also going to message out our utilities as well and let them, give them time to get their facility, the PG&Es, the AT&amp;Ts, and the other utility service providers to give them time to get their work done in advance. But as you well know, the city operates the water and the sewer in town, and we have control of those utilities. And we've vetted the 26 project for that. We haven't done that for the years two through five. We're going to do that. We'll be back here at council next year at this time to present the 2027 streets list. And we'll be sure that it's vetted and from a utilities perspective to make sure they're ready to go, all those streets. We believe the streets that we've presented tonight, I forget the zones right now, 17 and 6 and Cambridge, those have been vetted and they're ready to go. That's, I hope that answers your utility question. The other piece of that was the flexibility, the flexibility piece. We'd like you to approve those streets tonight so we can, there's a process here. We're going to put out an RFP for design of these streets. We'd like to put it out for three years. And so there is some need to understand what streets we're going to address. And so certainly, there's flexibility. And we know there's flexibility. But we want to get some buy-in to a plan so that we can put these, get them designed. And the other part of the early, if you'll notice, in the plan that we presented tonight, the downtown is part of that. Zones 2 and 3 are part of the streets that are going to be addressed. And there's, some of those streets are in sorely need of rehabilitation, and they will be part of the plan. We'll be able to have a downtown area that's something we can all be proud of. And that's an early part, a goal of this project. So yes, there's flexibility in this plan. I'll leave it at that.
Then I want to follow up on Zone 24, like Councilmember Birdseye brought up. And so it goes without saying, the occupants out there pay property taxes, they're paying the sales taxes as well. And so my question is, maybe it's relevant or related to my, this notion of flexibility. We're talking year two, three, four, five, not tonight, not what needs to go out to bid. But can you speak to, can we or how did you account for economic activity as well as the movement of goods in developing these zones? Because 24 was omitted. It's not as cool as residential. But nonetheless, you've got a couple of red zones there as well. So any sort of direction tonight, I think, would be helpful and certainly informative for those tuning in.
So the downtown, as I said, did figure into our plan in the first five years. As I said, the Zones 2 and 3 are, years 2 and 3, I'm sorry, years 2 and 3 have the downtown area covered. And that's an economic zone that we wanted to make sure we addressed and get the downtown area. So yes, economic vitality of the city, definitely a criteria in determining which areas we're targeting. The other piece is the residential, we're heavily committed to getting all of the residential areas done in the first 12 to 15 years. Though, that being said, there's, as Derek alluded to earlier, there's always going to be an area that we're not able to do. There's only, even though $4 million from Measure F to give us $5.5, it's a lot of money. And doing $5.5 million each year, that's a lot of money to put into pavement. But we have a $60 million backlog. And that's, that means there's a lot of roads out there that are in need of repair. There's going to be some roads that are not going to be addressed. And this is a plan that we've brought forward. We think it has a lot of sense. And it was an iterative process where we went back and forth and brought all of the criteria forward. And so certainly, there's some flexibility to it that we can consider. We'd ask that the first year get approved tonight. And certainly, we can consider some flexibility in the program as well.
That's a good word, flexibility, consideration. Certainly appreciate that. I want to talk a little bit about the funding sources. I can't remember if MTC and STA was on that list. They're certainly going to be pulling from a lot of the funding sources that you mentioned. I know you and the team have got their hands full with just this. But in tandem, thinking ahead, as STA begins to put together its kind of wish list for active transportation projects as well as the arterial works, where is transportation projects as well as the arterial works, um, where, where is staff at in, in terms of what's the plan or timeline for kind of putting together ready-to-go concepts or plans for us to be ready for our submissions, uh, to potentially add even more funding that would complement, uh, the, the funding that we have in place, which is a great place to start?
Great, great question. Uh, we are constantly, uh, uh, in touch with STA on funding opportunities. They're, they're, uh, they are, um, a, a great resource and they provide us assistance and guidance. Um, I, I sit on the TAC, um, it's a monthly meeting and, um, that's a, a standing item, funding opportunities. And, and we are, um, actively pursuing all the opportunities as they become available. ATP cycle six and seven, uh, in, in my email back to you today, our response back, um, on, on one of your questions, uh, about did we consider, um, funding, uh, and use that on, um, the West Seventh Corridor? And, and, and the answer was yes, we did pitch those, that street for, uh, ATP cycle six and seven. Unfortunately, we were unsuccessful. Some of those grant programs, we have a tough time being competitive because of, uh, we are not a disadvantaged community and we do not score well in those areas and, and some of those competitive grants. But we are continuing to look, there are areas, there are grants that we are competitive in and we continue to do that and look for those opportunities. Um, STA has their comprehensive transportation plan, um, and we're, we're, um, responsive to them in that area where they are, uh, always looking for funding for this city and, um, combining our work with other, uh, of our member agencies within STA to put together a competitive grant. So yes, the answer is there is, um, opportunity out there.
You're at the table.
We're at the table, we're looking, we're, 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 we're not just saying Measure F is it and we're, no, we're, we're, we're continuing to look for further opportunities to bolster what we're already, uh, receiving, uh, what we already have and, uh, we'll continue to do that.
Outstanding. Then my final question, I promise. Um, can't remember if I read this in the staff report or it's something else, but it's my understanding that road work has, uh, 10 to 15-year lifespan. And so my question is, and I don't know if this is for the city attorney, but, um, do we have the ability in these contracts to kind of bake in kind of quality clauses? Like if this thing falls apart in three years or seven years, you got to come back and fix it. I know that San Diego, I think, has some kind of contractor liability clause. I don't know if I'm using that term correctly, but I'm just, I'm kind of curious. Uh, what guarantees do we have on the quality of this work? Yeah.
Uh, very, very good question. Uh, that, that, well, there's a one-year warranty on, on, is, is the general construction warranty. Um, that doesn't cover you down the road. A lot of times, i- if it's not done right, you're not going to, it's, the, the problems aren't going to manifest itself in the first year. The key to that is, 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 uh, a, a project that's inspected from start to finish, that has good specs, that are based on industry standard, um, that, uh, have testing throughout, that, uh, we're inspecting and, and, and they're approached in a professional manner, um, from top to bottom. It, it's all a part of how we approach these jobs. That's how we are going to approach them here at the City of Benicia. We're going to make sure that our specs are tight and that we're inspecting the work, making sure that, uh, all the steps are taken, that no shortcuts have been, uh, taken, that the best materials, uh, are, the materials that we pay for are being delivered to the site. They're, 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 they're industry standard and, uh, that the project is built properly. That's how you make sure that these projects are, are built and last. Um, the one-year warranty is good for something that manifests itself in a year, but the, the, it, it's really a, a product of well-designed and well-inspected and that's how we intend to, to approach these projects.
Thank you. Appreciate all your responses.
Thanks. Um, I'd like to follow up on Councilman Birdseye's questions about, uh, priorities of particular zones. And I think, um, I understand your explanation on why we should spend money on good roads to the expense of not doing bad roads. And one of, one of the things I heard was, well, the cost would go, you know, up by 20% or 25% or whatever the number was, if we didn't continue in, say, Zone 22 and 23. Isn't the, uh, is it also true then that the cost on the failed roads would continue to get worse? Would, the cost would increase or are we assuming that they're already going to have to be reconstructed anyway? And that that cost is going to not change materially in that five-year period or three-year period or however long somebody's going to be expected to wait when they're living in, in this area?
Yeah, um, that's a very good question. The, um, th- there's a curve, uh, that, that I would, uh, direct you to as a response to that, that question. The, the cost to, 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 to repair roads, to rehabilitate roads varies from at, at the low end, uh, surface seals at $8 a square yard to the high end, $100 per square yard. Um, and there's a graph as it, as a road deteriorates, uh, from a surface seal to a total reconstruct or a full-depth reclamation. There's, there's a point there, if, if, a, a road needs to be sealed every eight to 10 years, um, just to keep it at a good condition. Even if you do that, after about three cycles of that, it's going to, to, to start to degrade. Um, but that's the strategy, keep the good roads good and then you take it off the steep decline. At some point when the, when the road is not attended to, um, it'll do fine for a while and then it will start to fall off. And then that, that $8 a square yard fix will become a $40 a square yard fix. Um, that, that's where your costs are escalating on this, on, on that curve. It's certainly the, the, the roads that are bad, um, the cost to fix a bad road in 2028 will be, uh, will be more in 2029, but it won't be more because it, it, it's further down the curve. It'll be because costs, construction costs have gone up by 4% over that year. Uh, you're dealing with both, uh, construction cost index and you're dealing with the, uh, the deterioration of roads on the roads that are be, um, um, not quite to the total reconstruct stage. So I, I don't know if I explained that.
I, I think so. The point I think for the community is, you know, a lot of people voted for Measure F, thankfully, with the expectation that my road's going to get fixed in some, you know, relatively near-term future. And when we show them a map that says, well, actually you're not in the first five years, but these Waters End, where the roads are good, is in the first five years. And so the, I understand it. I think the council understands the, uh, what you're talking about. It's going to be important that on your website or somewhere, there's a pretty clear explanation as to the rationale behind this, this decision-making so that you're not relying on the four of us to try to translate traffic engineering and road construction stuff for the, for the populace who may just feel like, well, I voted for this and I'm not going to get it for 10 years and I don't like that. So that's just one comment, I guess. The other would be that this, uh, description that, so tonight you're only asking us to approve the first year, not all five years?
The, the, the resolution does not include the five-year plan. It's, it's in the staff report.
So you'll be coming back every year and it'll be a rolling deal where like, okay, in next year we're going to approve for 26, 27?
That's correct. SB 1 requires that each, uh, a, a year in advance of doing the next year's project, you, you, uh, get a council resolution approving that list of streets. And so one year in advance, we'll be doing that.
So, um, the, the, the page you have here that talks about listed streets for 2026, do we have a similar list for the next four or five years that, that outlines which particular streets we're going to do?
The zones.
Well, the, the zones, the, no, no, I, I'm talking about the, the actual streets, not the zones, but the streets within the zones.
That, that's something we, we have in a, in a spreadsheet and can-
Yeah, it needs to be accessible, I think, so people can know that if they go there and that there was an index or something on your webpage that says, you know, for 26 or by street name, you can look it up and see where you are on a schedule, something like that.
I agree, yeah, yeah. Making this easy to, to look at is, is high priority. Uh, we're, we're going to work with our GIS specialist at some point to get a nice, uh, a nice map on the webpage. Uh, I think we have a couple already on there, um, not related to roads, but one where you can click around and, um, and, and see, you know, potential plans.
Okay, so one of the things, uh, and I assume that the, the side, uh, the street work includes curbs as well?
We're, we're focused on, on pavement, uh, rehab of the pavement. We, we will pick up the curbs that have-
Failed or something?
Failed, yes.
Okay, and then a, a similar question, and you mentioned sidewalks. So what level of sidewalks would we be repairing as part of this? Because typically it's the owner's responsibility to fix sidewalks, so under what circumstances would it be the city's going to pick up this responsibility going forward?
Uh, we would generally leave the, the, the sidewalk to the fronting property owner.
But it was listed at the beginning saying Measure F was going to pay for-
Right.
-streets, uh, potholes and sidewalks.
The, what, what that allows us to do is to pick up the, the curb ramps at the intersections by, by listing sidewalks and curb ramps.
So we maybe want to be a little bit more precise in how we describe this for the community. Because when somebody says sidewalks, like, oh, my, I'm, not only is my street going to get fixed, my sidewalk's going to get fixed too. Um, that's a, an interpretation that could be made if we don't do it. Uh, Mr. Giuliani?
If I may, Mayor, to, to clarify, it's important to note when, as staff was distinguishing the funding with Measure F, highlighted that Measure F can only be used for road repair, um, and sidewalk repair. Um, am I missing?
Storm dreams.
Storm dreams, thank you. I knew I was missing, there's three. So it's, it's very important to note that just because it can be used, doesn't mean it will be used.
Right, but if it's out there, there'll be an expectation or a, a desire, a hope that, that this maybe is going to fix my sidewalk too.
Well, but sure, but in the, the, the follow-up presentation and staff reports outline all those funds are being used to take care of our pavement, which isn't sufficient as we spent the last, you know, 40 minutes talking about all the roads that we want to get done. We can't because even with the new money coming in, it, it's still insufficient. Hopefully, right, that the, the folks that, that follow us in this room 15 years from now, because of the work that we have done, will finally be able to have a street pavement condition index with a lot of green streets. And thus the annual revenue that comes in will be able to work on alleys and sidewalks and other things that Measure F envisions.
I'm just wondering if Measure F, is the language in Measure F specifically list sidewalks? So we have to list it in our description of what we're going to do?
I think in order to be consistent and to be clear for the public to understand what those funds can and cannot be used for, I think it's helpful to do so.
And so the next question I had was, was alleys, as you mentioned. So alleys are not included in any of this?
If we do a good job in the next 15 years and funds come in, we'll have an opportunity to address those things that aren't on the list now. But that sets us up for success into the future.
Yeah, I'm, I just want to be as clear, as clear as we can to the community who is going to be asking questions, well, I, I'm paying this tax now, I voted for it, I'm paying the tax. What and when is something going to happen that's relevant to me? And then you said that no zone would be repeated until all those zones have been addressed. I assume we're excluding Zones 22 and 23, even though they're in good shape? Under what logic then? That we haven't spent mon- this money on it?
Yes, that, that's moving forward. Uh, the first year of the program is in 2026. We're not going to repeat a zone until all of the zones have been treated.
All right. And my last question has to do with, are we looking at alternative types of, uh, surface treatments such as rubberized asphalt where it has a lot longer life and maybe we don't have to re- return as often? It might be a little more expensive to buy the materials upfront, but presumably has a much longer life.
Yes, absolutely. We will be looking at, uh, all of the, uh, uh, types of, of, of streets and, uh, repair. Uh, the, the, the project that we're putting out this summer, uh, the 2025, um, citywide pavement rehab, which is kind of a misnomer because it's focused on Military West from Safeway up to, uh, Mary Farmer, uh, will include a, a rubber, uh, micro-surface type five rubberized, uh, system.
And so we'll decide that before we engage a consultant to do the engineering? So we'll know the, the, we'll know what type of materials we're going to be putting down or we're going to leave it to them to make recommendations?
We, we will, we will leave it open, uh, to use the best, the, the, the method that, that, that best suits the, uh, the street. Each, each street would be treated, uh, and provide, uh, we, we provide the, the most appropriate treatment for that street.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Scott.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick follow-up. You mentioned that, um, typical warranties for, uh, street repairs is one year. Can, uh, the city negotiate with the contractors for longer repair warranty for, uh, high-traffic roads? Can that be part of the spec?
The typical construction warranty is one year. You, you can certainly put, uh, more into the contract. It would, you'd pay for it. We would have to, um, I'd have to look into that a little further to see if, uh, industry standard though is a year for, for the-
Just be curious to see if we could pay a little bit more upfront and we get three or four years more of warranty, but nonetheless, if you could look into that. My, my other question is, looking to the future, uh, when we look at Zones 23 and 10, there is the potential for, um, new development, home building in those two areas. Um, where and how will you be routing construction traffic? Is that something that for, you know, five, even though it'll be a minimum of probably five to 10 years before we're actually talking about this, but I hate to see all that getting us up to a 70 PSI and then having all those trucks coming in and, and destroying them and/or, uh, without having a plan in place that talks about how we are going to route traffic away from into Waters End and then into the highly congested, uh, Arsenal and 10?
Uh, very, very good point. We, we will, um, draft our specifications for the job carefully, making sure that we, um, specify acceptable routes of construction that, um, so we'll, we'll, we'll give some thoughtful approach to that. It'll also dictate where we choose the zones to, um, make sure we're, we're looking at that, uh, as well. That'll be a criteria for selection, but, uh, we'll also look at where, uh, what routes will be allowed and certain routes will not be allowed. Uh, a, a, a street that's recently been paved would, uh, be restricted from truck traffic. And if they did have, um, damage it, we would, uh, um, consider other options of, uh, providing seals, uh, as needed. Uh, those are relatively cheap and we would, uh, make sure we, we gave a thoughtful approach to that and considered that in our, uh, the way we lay out our jobs.
Thank you.
Councilmember Largusfata.
One last question. I know I promised I was done, sorry. Um, I'm looking for clarification on something. So in the staff report, my pages aren't numbered, um, but in the paragraph above, the paragraph titled 2022, 2026 Street List, sorry, the sentence above that reads approximately 1 million per year will be dedicated to maintaining major roadways that aren't included in the residential pavement zones. So is that baked into the 5.5 million or do we have a million adjacent to that that would be, um, also spent? And if it's adjacent, so to speak, uh, is there any kind of strategy, planning priorities? What, what kind of process are we going to put behind that? If, if it's in addition?
So, uh, yeah, we try and spend one to one and a half million per year on major roadways and that would leave 4 million for the, the residential and local streets. So, um, it's, it's four and then one to one and a half is what, is, is what we're aiming for. Uh, it's kind of like a starting point and, and going from there. The nice thing about the, uh, the arterials and collectors is that, um, you know, we're not, we have more flexibility with those because they're not part of zones, but our first starting point is when we're picking- But our first starting point is when we're picking a zone, is to try and look at the arterials and collectors that are nearby to keep that economies of scale going. And if there's no good candidates nearby or if there's another street somewhere else in town, we have the flexibility to include another arterial collector elsewhere unrelated to the zone choices. So that's an area, going back to your question about flexibility, we have 40% of our streets are arterials and collectors that aren't in zones. And so we're flexible to approach those differently than the zones approach. And that's where that one to 1.5 million would be, would be going towards.
Thank you.
Good, let's open it up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make public comment on this item?
Matthew Cargo, Whitechapel Drive. This is kind of a surprise to me. I came down here to listen to a few other things and this, I've been kind of wondering what's going to happen with the streets and we got some answers tonight. Real quick, I'll make it quick. You guys all pretty much, everything I, time I had a question, somebody kind of covered it, so. Is it possible that maybe down, the green downtown here, you know, where we did the little festivals and everything, that's kind of like a, an area that needs to be paved as well? I don't know how we'd go about that. Maybe some kind of, how piggyback that into what we're doing already with all this, you know, the streets around town. I moved here 29 years ago and I remember the spit down here where the, it's over here actually, the, here is, that used to not be paved at one point and it was really bad to drive down there, but it's, you know, things have gotten better with it. That's just a thought. And then the contractors, if we have someone come in afterwards, because let's face it, someone's going to dig something up somewhere. There's no way we're going to avoid it. Sooner or later, someone's going to have to dig something in one of the new areas to hold them to a real high standard. I know you've talked about that pretty good, but I mean, because they'll blow and go, they'll come in there and dig it up and then they'll patch it and, okay, we're out of here and it's a problem area within a year or two. So really, someone does have to dig into that after we've already went through all this, to really hold them to a high standard and make sure that it's done really well. And that's about it. You guys covered pretty much a lot of stuff, so thanks for everything. I just came down here to listen to some other things, maybe possibly about Valero, actually. And this was kind of a pleasant surprise. I live on Whitechapel, like I said, so I'm kind of excited about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Culp?
Can you hear me? Maggie Culp. Full disclosure, I was one of the citizens on the Yes on Measure, Measure F Committee who stood, and before I start, go to there. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Thank you for all of your hard work. Very much appreciated. I was one of those people that stood in front of railies and Safeway and at the farmer's market and collected signatures to get this measure on the ballot. And then, once we got it on the ballot, stood in the same places urging people to vote yes on Measure F. What I have to say is I really hope that everyone here respects the transparency that our citizens of Benicia expect. In looking at 10 of the areas that are being, the zones are being addressed, there are 14 that are not being addressed of those 24 zones. Some of those zones are all orange and red zones and they're not even in the five-year plan. So I can't ask for tools to respond to my friends and neighbors who come to me and say, I voted for that. Why isn't my neighborhood being, or my street being repaved? But I really urge transparency and in that way, maybe we can educate, educate our neighbors why their streets aren't included in the first, at least the first five years. I mean, zones eight and 14 are all red and orange. They're all poor or failing and they're not even on the list for the next five years. Anyway, so I'm urging transparency, education, that's the only way I think we're going to be able to satisfy the citizens who voted for this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Culp. And I think the short answer, as I understand it, what you can tell your neighbors is your street is so bad that it's going to take a lot more money to fix your street than it might somebody else. And we have, only have four or to $5 million a year and that we're going to have to spread that over the next 10 years. So to get a total rebuild of your street is going to take three or four times as much as working in an area that's not quite as bad. So, you know, it's, may not be satisfying, but that is the analysis or the understanding that I have. And maybe you can correct me if I misstated any of that.
Yeah, Mayor, I would just add that we certainly are getting after areas that have bad roads.
Also, yeah.
But there is, even though five and a half million is a lot of money to spend each year, it's not going to get every street and there are going to be zones that are going to be left out. That's just a fact of it. And we are doing our best to spread the wealth throughout the city.
And that everything will get done over 10 to 15-year period?
That's correct.
10 to 12-year period?
That's correct.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes.
To reiterate, and I'm glad to have the opportunity, and it's incumbent upon all of us, and you highlighted earlier that we're not engineers, yet we are having the benefit of this presentation and understanding. It is incumbent on each of us to be able to talk about this with our neighbors and friends in the community so that they can understand why you would do good roads before bad roads. Why are some zones on this five-year plan and not others? And what's important to note is this is a five-year plan. When we talked about the passage of Measure H, or excuse me, Measure F, it was 15 years. You're seeing one-third of a 15-year plan. And I think that's important to note is that we have zoned out this entire community so that we can meet the promise of Measure F in a period of 15 years. That is the takeaway. And yes, some zones are far more expensive than others and it will take years in order to save enough dollars in order to do that. And what you're seeing, and I want to highlight for this, the council and members of this community so that you can go back and speak to your friends and neighbors. This is the first city council that is looking at a five-year road plan, the first city council that is considering a five-year road plan. That in and of itself is historic and it is the first step to getting us to that 15 years.
And we wouldn't be here if we didn't have the support of the community and the people who voted for Measure F. So that's always the bottom line. Anybody else who would like to make public comment on this? Ms. Grunman?
I wanted to thank you also. This has been quite a road. I appreciate this zoning strategy. It's far and above the P-TAP. I've, I've looked at that a number of times and that was quite challenging. I have one concern and that's with West Seventh. I saw that that was on, I think, year three and I believe it's an arterial, if I'm not mistaken. And in our, in our city, I'm sure you all drive it too, I think that's probably one of our most challenging arterials. And so I urge you to kind of look at that and maybe you can scoot that up maybe to year two. But otherwise, I appreciate this plan a lot, so good job.
And one of the issues with West Seventh is I think we have a big water line or sewer line replacement planned that you don't want to, you know, you've got to do that first before you do that. Anybody else who would like to make public comment on this? Mr. Moderator, anybody online who would like to make public comment on this?
No.
All right, then I'll return to the council, close public comment, see if there's any additional questions or otherwise a motion perhaps?